So Ed, I'll have you come up as a Minister. Chris, please vote.
Thank you, everybody. Glad to be here tonight. Like to thank all the school board members. I know how hard you work. Been the Green Tree Mayor for 12 years, been on council for eight, so I know what it takes with the school board. Thank anybody there. I'm glad that Chris ran for school board. He's been making a great job. He's a hard worker. I've got to know him during the election, been sitting with lots of meetings, very knowledgeable. His family's here tonight, his wife Tara and four children, two of them go to Aiken School. One goes to the rural school and one goes to high school. So he has a lot of investment in the school district here. It's great he's been doing that. And his family, hopefully they understand when it comes to all these meetings and everything. You know, I've been to three this week and my wife's been understanding. But I have no kids at home. They're all off the family payroll. So anyhow, we're gonna get down. I go on ski trips, spend the kids' inheritance. Hey, I spend kids' inheritance. That's the stage I'm at in my life. So if I don't be quiet, we'll get out of here by seven thirty. Can you repeat after me, Chris? Can you raise your right hand? I'm just starting it easy. Aye.
Aye.
State your name, please.
Chris Crasly.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey and defend.
Obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And Constitution of the Commonwealth.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties.
That I will discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations, Chris.
Thank you. First, I'll get to take my seat over here. And Karen, glad you're here. Glad you're working hard. Karen's here. We do have other Board members that got reelected, so congratulations. So come on up. I have two reelected. Ms. Shaw was reelected, Snyder. You're welcome. You're welcome.
Please raise your right hand.
Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
I'm Karen.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey and defend.
Obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And Constitution of this Commonwealth.
Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I.
And that I.
Will discharge the duties.
Will discharge the duties.
Of my office with fidelity.
Of my office with fidelity. Thank you.
Welcome for another run. You're welcome.
Good. Great.
And with that, during the reorg- so at this time, I will be acting as the temporary chair until a president is elected. So at this time, I'd like to follow the order. The reorganization meeting of the Keystone Oaks School District. Will all please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Mrs. Myers, can you do a roll call vote, please? Roll call attempt. Attempt. Roll call attempt. I'm sorry.
Uh, Mr. LaPorte?
Here.
Ms. Snyder?
Here.
Ms. Shaw?
Here.
Ms. Donahue?
Here.
Mr. Wilson?
Present.
Mr. Crasly?
Here.
Ms. Lindsay?
Here.
All in presence.
And we do have one absence. Mrs. Lydon is absent. And if some of you may recognize here right now, the Board is currently now seated only, and this is for the public's knowledge, only seated with eight members. We do not have a ninth member because there was not a winner in Castle Shannon or a write-in winner in Castle Shannon. So during the reorganization meeting, I'm sorry, during the special voting meeting, the Board will have to take action on a step there. So I just want to call everyone's attention. At this time, me acting as the temporary chair, I'm going to open up the election for nominations for president. So at this time, the nomination for president of the Keystone Oaks School Board of Directors is now open.
I nominate Ms. Emily Snyder for second.
Okay, so we have one nomination for Ms. Emily Snyder. Are there any other nominations for president? Now hearing none, do I have a motion to close the nominations for position of president?
I make that motion.
You have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we only have one candidate, but I'm still going to call for a roll call vote. Mrs. Myers.
This is for the nomination of Ms. Snyder.
As president.
As president. Ms. Lindsay?
Yes.
Ms. Donahue?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. LaPorte?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Crasly?
Call abstain.
Mrs. Lydon?
Well, she's not here. So how many votes?
Six.
We have a new president.
Congratulations.
Are we moving around?
Well, yeah. Okay, so you vote. This is all yours. No, you want to stay there here.
There's nothing that says the president has to sit in that particular seat.
True. It's always been that way. I don't know why.
Right, I know. It always has.
Yeah. Rayanne and I have been around long.
Well, I'm respectful.
Long.
Yeah.
So you are going to pick up, there's a non-serviced person. Yep.
This is the hardest one you'll do.
It is.
No, I'm kidding. It's like weird.
Yes, this is just weird. Yeah.
Well, it can't be worse than my really long personal report, so. Okay, the nominations for vice president of the Keystone Oaks Board of Directors are now open. I'd like to nominate Annie Shaw.
And you don't need a second.
Annie Shaw is nominated. Are there any other nominations? Why the motion to close the nominations for the position of vice president?
I make that motion.
Okay.
Roll call.
This is for a roll call vote for Ms. Shaw as vice president. Ms. Donahue?
Yes.
Ms. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. LaPorte?
Yes.
Ms. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Crasly?
Call abstain.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Motion carries.
At this, you just need a motion to adjourn.
Oh, yeah. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
Is that we're not doing the reorganization? Yeah.
That's next. That's separate. Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, before we go into reorg, anybody want to move their seats? Nobody wants to move their seats? Okay. All right. Look, is everybody?
Well, I'm gonna move.
No! You're near the attorney. She'll guide you through.
Wait, do I still have to?
Yeah, you can. Go over here.
Well, Teresa wasn't here. She gets balled.
That's right. That's what, that's what.
I'm never missing. I have to sit here. I know.
No, we did not open up. We did not open up the next meeting.
All right, so I will, I can make this. Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. I'm not going to have a motion to pledge again. I'm going to move into. Down here?
Yes.
I'm gonna move into public comment.
Then you'll do your special motion.
So I can make this motion?
You could call for it.
Um, I'm going to call for a motion to amend the agenda, to add a voting item to appoint Sonny Razzo as board member for the vacant seat. I will make that motion.
Second.
Okay, and then now the Board just has to vote on amending the agenda.
Does it have to be a roll call?
No.
No, it's just an all in favor.
All in.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain?
Call abstain.
Thank you. Motion carries. And now I'm gonna call for a motion to approve the appointment of Sonny Razzo to the vacant board seat. Can I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Just out of curiosity, can I have a question? Are these seats not open up to interviews as other governmental bodies are?
So that, unless the attorneys speak to that, that's always up to the Board's decision.
Yeah, there's not a defined process. Once there's a declared vacant seat, the Board determines how they seek to fill it. Some Boards do interviews, some know of a person in the community that they think can serve in that seat and do a, you know, good job. And I think in this particular situation, as a former longstanding board member from that area, it's someone to represent that community. And so that's the defined process here today.
And the term, the term is two years, correct?
Right, until the, the May.
When there is somebody who's appointed.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so what will happen?
Until the next election cycle.
The person that gets appointed tonight is a two-year. And two years from now, that per- whoever it is, that person would have to run again for another two years to get this position back on the cycle.
Okay.
For Castle Shannon.
So Rayanne will have a, like when Rayanne is up running, this open position will be up as well, right?
Yeah, so it'll be a special vote. At that time, it'll be a special, it'll be considered a special voting in the borough of Castle Shannon. Because they're only having a two, and then a two, is how it is. To get that back on the four-year cycle.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I would just beg you to note for Mr. Crasly that there's a defined time limit in the school code to appoint a board mem- to appoint someone, and I believe it is.
Thirty days.
Thirty days from the general?
No, it was thirty days from when the district was notified that there was nobody to fill the vacancy.
Which was like twenty-fourth? Which was like, right, oh, ten days ago?
Not the twenty-fourth?
It was supposed to be.
It was supposed to be, and it was much later. So it actually, it actually came this week. It actually happened on, not Tuesday. No, yesterday. I'm all confused because we weren't at school. We actually got the official word yesterday. So you do have, under the school code, thirty days. So from yesterday, you could appoint somebody to this position all the way, wait, all the way up until January first. But you would have to have another public meeting.
Yeah.
Between now and January first, you would have to hold it whenever, and that could be.
Really technically would run after tonight, when the Board formally accepted and declared the seat vacant. So you have thirty days to stay. And it's just a somewhat provident that you're here today and can fill the seat. So it just kind of worked out nicely for the Board as to that. Have I answered your question?
Yeah, that's fine.
And now the vote.
I'm gonna do a roll call vote.
Yes.
This is to appoint Mr. Razzo to a two-year term for the vacant school board position. Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Crasly?
Call abstain.
Mr. LaPorte?
Yes.
Ms. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Lindsay?
Yes.
Ms. Donahue?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Now, before Mr. Razzo approaches, he has to be sworn in. So Mrs. Wong, will you swear again, Mr. Razzo?
For the hybrid right. Aye. State your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support, obey and defend the Constitution of the United States and Constitution of this Commonwealth. And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity. Thank you.
Can't wait to be back. Maybe.
Where'd you want to sit?
Where you said.
So right there. Long show has.
Just temporary.
Now it's not removed.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
Okay, so.
You left me? You left me, Sonny?
He's coming back.
I know.
I'm not gonna cut you loose.
Yeah, Sonny.
I'm not gonna cut my fur loose.
Okay, so.
Twelve, four, twenty-five.
Since there's no committees appointed, does Dr. Strzokki have to do the whole?
Yeah, I, this is the meeting, since there are no, since there are no committees appointed, and saying then as superintendent, I will run, I'll go through the whole thing, since there are no. And that is the, and I'm just helping Chris out a little bit. That is the job of the President, the way the Boards are there, to decide who's on which committees, and to run which committees. So the President will usually reach out to the group in the next couple of days and say, here's all of our committees. Is there anyone that you're interested in? So Chris has some good background. I just spoke in the past month. So it'll be good for some of the committees. I'll just say that. Be very polite. They want you over there. So, okay, so first item I want to recommend to the Board that we approve. The Brentwood Borough School District to be participating in Project Success for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Any discussions?
Dr. Strzokki, you've been hard at work recruiting these schools.
Hey, I'm, we're at it. This one I had to drag out. They've been part of us forever and ever and ever. We're, come on. I drove up fifty-one, let them know. Bring them down. Bring them down. So we're getting, I'm in here. Yep.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries.
Second item, recommend the Board approve the following professional development. It's for myself and Dr. Leonard to represent the district at the League of Innovative Schools Spring Convention at the Dollar Figure listed there, understanding that the League will be contributing six hundred dollars towards my cost to the program.
Dr. Strzokki, I'm sorry. I can't, I have to wait.
Yeah, yeah.
Discussion? Sorry.
No, sure.
I'll make the motion. Oh, I think Ian makes it.
Ian makes the motion.
Okay. Could you say what the League of Innovative Schools is, or anybody who does not know what that is?
Yes. So the League of Innovative Schools, affiliated with a digital promise, is a prestigious group that recognizes superintendents throughout the country who are making a difference to their community with their administrative staff and so on and so forth. About a year ago, I was approached by the League of Innovative Schools and said that some of my local colleagues and some colleagues across the country had nominated me for the work that I was doing through AAS and stuff, and recognized that had nominated me to apply to the League of Innovative Schools, because you do have to apply. It's a very lengthy process. I do have to say that Mr. Pumbiak, Dr. Barley, Dr. Leonard, and a number of people contributed to helping that application for about thirty pages, if I remember. I had to go through an interview process. They interviewed myself and Dr. Leonard because they were very interested in the innovative things, and we were moving on the personalized learning, project-based learning, and what, into high school. And in July, August, I was notified that we got in for the first time. So I was, I've been personally accepted. This here that I will be going to will be accepting the award for me, but also through the district. The district can only get in through the superintendent. Now, all of you know me very well. It sounds like a little bit pompous and this and that, but it has been through my leadership and the work, but also all of your work in supporting me to be able to go where I've been able to go to get us recognized. So here, so don't let anybody say, oh, you're just Keystone Uts. We're probably one of the best kept secrets in the South Hills, and we've got a lot, lot more work to come. But thank you to the Board. So this will be for myself and Dr. Leonard, who will go. He will be participating in two and a half days out there of work with high school principals across the country, while I am working with superintendents across the country and in the group. And then we will be bringing that back. In addition, he and I will be at the Science Center tomorrow with four teachers who will be presenting regionally tomorrow at the Science Center. So if you keep on getting me, you see I'm out of office. That's where I am tomorrow. I will be down there. And two of our kids and two teachers were asked to present there for the Golden Oaks Design Project, because Remake Learning has recognized our Golden Oaks program regionally and the work that those kids are doing. And the kids, about an hour ago, shared with me their PowerPoint, and it's just phenomenal. It is unbelievable. So you need to be proud of the kids. I'm very, very proud. So that's what the League is. It will bring more recognition, more stuff to the district. I do have to say, I should have been in Washington DC earlier this week, because the League did have something. But knowing that it was reorg on Tuesday, but then you people pulled the trigger on me. You changed the thing. I could have been down DC, but I didn't want to be DC again anyhow, so that's okay. But thank you to the Board. Thank you for your support, and there will be more to come of what's going to happen during the changes. So I think that's about, I tried to summarize as much as I can.
Very nice. Very nice. Good job.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Do that. Yeah.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries.
I will bring everybody back to Starbucks Coffee, because that's their headquarters. There's nothing to know about Seattle.
Can you write that down?
Yes, you have.
It's in the minute.
It's in the minute. It's better. What you're gonna see, and then, I don't know about Seattle, but Seattle, I have never been there. So this is new for me.
There's a face.
Take an umbrella. Frasier was filmed there. Oh, I know.
Can I move to the next thing?
Uh, yeah.
Move into policies. I'm asking for a motion to abolish the following policies, because all of those policies, we went through this past month, are either covered in other policies or were to be abolished and weren't at some time, because Ms. Shaw, her hard work. These are all covered at other places. We don't need them. It's duplicate. So I'm asking the Board to abolish those five policies listed.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussions?
Is there a second review when you abolish a policy?
Any, no.
No, it's just an abolishment.
Yeah. What had happened, just answer, is that.
It didn't come out of committee.
They didn't. No, because I caught all of these. These were never pulled when they should have been pulled, because they were already, there's other policies that supersede these. And I caught all of this in probably the last month or so. And so I talked with the, they were already covered. Even like the first one there on early admissions, it's in our graduation policy. It's duplicate. We already have it, yeah.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries.
And then under pupil personnel, we had a contrast that showed up the past couple of days. I'm gonna recommend that the Board approve the transition services agreement between cares of Western PA and our district, effective December eighth through the end of this school year, and this is for one student.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Is there a possibility of clarifying what this service is that the program is providing? I ask in the context of a lot of services provided by this agency are funded through the Office of Developmental Services.
Yes.
And why the district is covering the cost instead of, oh, yes.
Yes, so we don't cover all of them, because there's some of them that are involved in transition. So this is for a student that is somewhere between graduation and the age of twenty-one. So there are some things, like the transportation piece, I think, yes, you're correct. There's a lot of stuff we are reimbursed for, but there is a little bit of a cost to choose the district, okay?
Do you know what the cost is?
That I don't know. I don't know that amount, but I could find out for you. Yeah, that I don't know. If, Maureen, if you could write that down, and we could find from Mrs. Karen, we can get that. I'm not sure of the exact cost. But it's also because it's an agreement, you know, between the district, and the Board would have to take action on it, too. But there is some cost, I believe it is, the transportation is a cost. I know we're reimbursed, but I don't know to what extent we are.
Any slice of person.
Yeah. But I'll get that for Mr. Wilson.
So this is all, we're all legally obligated.
You're legally obligated to do this. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah, but that's a good question that Mr. Wilson brings up.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries.
Okay, and one of you have time to get to do personnel, because the other two forward personnel people are just smiling. And this is, it's short. I would like to recommend that the Board accept the retirement of Mr. John, known as Jack Priori, who was a custodial supervisor, effective March thirteenth, twenty-twenty-six.
I'll make that motion. Okay, I would start that discussion with thank you for twenty-two years of service.
Yeah, that was great.
And most of you that have had children come from Myrtle know Jack. Jack's been there.
I went to school with Jack.
Yeah, Jack's been there twenty-two years, so.
He knows where all the bodies are buried.
He knows all of them. And he has been helped, too, with talking about the remodeling and stuff. Looking at, yeah, Jack's been a big help.
He'll be missed.
Yes. Good guy.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries.
Under appointments, I'll do the first one separately. In compliance with the K O E A Collective Bargaining Agreement, I'd like to recommend the approval of the employment of Travis Woodburn as an ESL teacher, effective January twentieth, twenty-twenty-six, at the salary and step listed.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Discussion?
And I'll add to that, he is replacing our retiree from the high school at semester time. So he will be coming in in January, because we do have our ESL teacher retiring at the, at the high school. So he's replacing her.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries.
And in compliance with the K O E A Collective Bargaining Agreement, I'd recommend the approval of the following three individuals listed there. For the middle school musical, all will be the assistants for the musical, and those stipends that are listed.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Discussion?
Is that musical now in the spring for middle school? It used to be fall. Are we?
Section two.
It was frozen, right?
Yeah, I sure.
It was. It was in the spring. Is there a reason one gets one more than the other?
Um, that would be a joke. All right, that's better.
Depending on how much work they do, if someone does more, a thing, they split it up that way, up to the director.
Oh, they, they decided that, alright.
They determine, yeah, the director determines how these.
There's, there's, there's the bottom on it, no. But they're given a contract, and then the director decides based on what they're doing, lets, uh, Joe's office know how that stipend is going to be paid, yeah, yeah.
I, I'm glad that we're, you know, actually, um, putting this on the agenda before the activity has already occurred, because we've done that so many times, but is there a reason why we couldn't have gotten this on, maybe when the practices first started?
So I yell at them every year, in all honesty, all about telling us who to do again, because there are sometimes problems or things after the fact, so, to work in progress, we at least got it before it happened, but, uh, it's still something we're trying to work on, especially with that and the high school musicals.
I mean, like I said, I'm glad to see that it's on here now, where the musical is still happening. It's usually post, so.
We, we need to stress that it also has to do with, like, this is sort of the motion, you know, that the clearances have been accepted, and I don't know if these are teachers or...
So two of them are, which makes it a little easier that they are there, but there's one that is not, so that's, especially at the high school musical, there are so many people that come in and out, um, that we need a lot of paperwork on before they can come, kids, so, uh, we're trying to cut them a little time to get us there. A lot of times, the hangup is the money portion, where they may have individuals which we told them before, we can approve them at salaries to be determined, and then that can be voted on later.
Yeah.
Uh, but I don't know if they understand that.
Thank you. Um, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
And the last item on there is just, uh, I'm recommending the approval of the following individual for family and medical reasons listed.
I'll make the motion.
Sorry.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
And that concludes all of the reporting I'll be making.
Okay, great.
Thank you, doctor. You're welcome, sir.
Okay, um, any other public comment? I'd just like to say congratulations to everyone, which is, uh, we need to re-up.
Yeah, and just, Linda, so all the reappointed people, and Chris, know, um, you are required by Pennsylvania School Code to get oriented and go through, uh, training.
AIU.